Medical, police, fire. We've got the shift workers here. We know the importance of the logistics supply chain and how it needs to be around the clock now because we've gone from a world where you used to go out to to the world comes to you now. So we have more and more people here in the state of New Jersey. In fact, one out of eight are working in the logistics supply chain. So again, that's shift work. Those are people that are working at night to get those trucks loaded, to get the wheels on the road and get products, goods, and medicines out to the people who need it. Again, this is the exact same land use that caters to a daytime population. It's also very popular in the later hours as well. So again, not just shift workers, essential workers, road construction crews, drivers and travels of all types. For whatever reason, good or bad, we all find ourselves on the road sometimes at late hours. And again, this is a service use that's there when you need it. So it should be accessible. So I think that this application is spot on with that purpose G in the land use law. I think we can also tie it to purpose A, the promotion of the general welfare. It is a popular land use and a use that people like. So there is a good complementary nature of the extended hours and the use itself. Again, purpose A, purpose G. I think the application as a whole also advances some of the fundamental purposes of zoning, including purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment. That building, that site is very well maintained, neat, well organized. And this is going to enhance that established business, which I think has been well planned. And that's really kudos to this board who approved it a few years ago. And also kudos to our applicant who's taking this good use and this good development, which I think is having a positive influence on your community and making it better. You've heard about the shift of the order point, another three spaces to make ordering operations more efficient. I think that's a good thing from a planning standpoint. And I've got the predicate on the record from the sworn expert testimony of a traffic engineer and a site engineer as well. So I think the board has a good foundation to hook the extended hours to the beneficial nature of the use and the improvements that the applicant is doing here as well. And then finally, lastly, purpose M. That's our planning goal, to efficiently use our land, taking what's there, sort of shifting things around a little bit, moving that order point from the one side to the other side. Certainly goes towards that purpose and will. The end result is going to be operational efficiencies. As I said, it's a use that serves the public and it's going to make this use even better. That said, I think on the positive side, there's clearly an access to the purpose A, G, I, and M. I think there's also an access to the purpose H, the free flow of traffic. And I think this is going to facilitate the drive-through experience, make it easier and more efficient. And I believe the brand Taco Bell, QSR magazine says it's the fastest of all the fast foods in terms of processing your orders. So this is going to take it and make it even better. We are a time-pressed society and that drive-through certainly caters to that aspect of modern life. And we all know about the benefits of mobility challenged people as well that that drive-through amenity provides. So caters to that demographic during the evening hours as well. Again, I think that's all a good thing. Counterbalancing all those positives, we always have to look at the effect. I'm sure the reason why we contain the hours of operation is to avoid nuisance and impacts on case properties. This regulation that you have actually pertains to uses that are within 200 feet of residential. You know, you have residential right on the other side of the line here. I went out there, I looked, it's actually immediately adjacent to the drive-through is a detached garage. So it almost provides sort of a fortifying effect, if you will, around the development and creating a screening effect from that nearest residence. So I think that's something that the board can consider as well in terms of impact. There's also a solid eight-foot-high privacy fence that separates the subject property from the adjacent residential properties as well. And then finally, you've got the sworn expert testimony on the record, a sound expert, from a traffic expert, that there will be no substantially adverse impacts on the adjacent properties, which of course is the board's responsibility to protect the public. And I think you have good evidence and testimony here to support that aspect as well. Interrelated to the extended hours of operation, the applicant is asking the board to move on some signage relief. I know you heard about it last time, but it's essentially to have those Taco Bell projecting signs underneath the bells that are already there. These were previously approved, but the exact model, the exact make that was approved back in 2016 is no longer available. So the applicant is asking the board to move on the newer version that's available. Again, it just says Taco Bell and it's a projecting sign. There's three of them. They're going to be under the three bells that are out there now. And the relief is to have the signs approximately two square feet larger than what was previously approved. And the applicant is also asking the board to move on the projecting sign being 14 inches off the facade face as opposed to eight inches. I think that relief can fall within the realm of being de minimis and not a substantial change from what was previously approved. It will, again, just add to the aspect of brand familiarity leading to customer expectations. These elements are common in a contemporary imaging of Taco Bell. And I don't see any substantially adverse impacts with that relatively modest sign change. All said, I think this is and remains a good development, a good business establishment here in your community. It's going to make it better. Whenever we look at a development application that has a positive influence on the public at large and has no substantially adverse impacts, it should be approved. And with that, I would offer that. I think there's enough testimony on the record here that all relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public or without any substantial impairment to the event purpose of his own plan. I think with that, Jeff, I'm closed on the record unless I missed something.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. I appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, I return it back to you.
Okay, I have a question. Could keeping the restaurant itself open address the same needs for the general public that keeps the drive-through open?
Well, I think the applicant is only asking the drive-through to be open at those later hours.
And that's my question. Why the drive-through without the order?
Why not have both or one or the other?
One or the other.
Well, the restaurant is there inside, not the street.
That's what I'm...
Sorry, not the car you're driving on the back.
And it's, I'm putting that to you in the form of a question.
Understood.
Could keeping the restaurant open and not the drive-through during those late hours address the same needs that you're testifying the drive-through is going to address?
The answer is, I don't think so. Because this is being driven by the applicant's experience, the end user's experience, that the drive-through in those after-hours becomes the more popular route that people choose to take.
Okay, any other questions?
Who have mentioned shifts. I guess I'm old-fashioned, but I thought shifts were eight to four, four to 12. I'm assuming you're looking at shifts that are variable. But 2:30 in the morning seems to be a very late shift or a very early shift depending upon where you're working. I'm a little concerned about this opens the door for everybody to you 2:30, now 3 o'clock. I mean, in essence, why don't you just ask for 24 hours? What difference does it make? I think it makes a difference. You would like to at least have some peace and quiet in the town after a certain hour. I certainly see no problem with 1:00 a.m., but now you're starting until about 2:30 or by the time you close this place, it's going to be 3 o'clock. I can't imagine if you've got a line of cars, you're just, oh, no, he can't be served. So the problem I have is what is the definition of a shift? In 2022, nomenclature versus what I think a shift is, where the people get off around midnight and go grab a bite to eat and then they take off for home. Or they start and then they grab a bite. So that's my question.
Well, it's a great question. And I can only relate it to what I see in the warehouse world because better or worse, I see a lot of those applications now. All of these warehouse operators are looking, warehouse developers are looking for 24 hours because the demand is surging. The statistic that jumps out at me is out in the ports, the container volume is up 19% in the last five years. So that's pre-pandemic. It was going up before the pandemic. Online shopping, you know, just easier to do it that way. So there's demand to have these workers there around the clock. And none of these warehouse guys are giving on the around-the-clock operation. They're all asking for it. And so 1:00, 2:30, there'll still be people out there on the road.
Yeah, I just, in your original statement, I'm not trying to be sarcastic, but it makes it seem like you guys are saving the world by making sure that the warehouse guy can come down and get his Taco Bell. Yokiro Taco Bell also, again. I have an 18-year-old at my house and I know what he's going to do. It becomes almost an attractive nuisance to me to have the hours extended that much. It's not just going to be the St. Lee guy who's making sure that the truck gets unloaded so that we can get the medicine over there. It's not, that's not what this is about. We have to kind of be more realistic with that. It's going to be an attractive nuisance. And then McDonald's is going to say, hey, what about us? Dunkin' Donuts is going to say, hey, what about us?
It's a really good question. Part of my responsibility is to paint the good picture because a lot of people think that it's only loiterers and kids hanging out.
They live in my house.
I actually have food there.
Not for much longer.
The point is, there's certainly a good element that benefits from this. And there are also, you've got your police regulations as well that controls loitering and sound and all the normal nuisance things that will protect against that as well. I don't want to bear enough kids, but if loiterers are hanging out in a parking lot at night, I'm sure there's police regulations that can control that if it's becoming a nuisance to the neighbor there. So I think there's other layers of protection in that regard.
I totally understand that. There was talk about a graduated response. Instead of going all the way to 2:30, what if we extended the hours to 1:00 and see how it looks and see how it acts and see what the impact is? And then once we could see that, yeah, it's not going to be that bad. Because these are neighbors that are there. They're going to get the brunt of it. I'm not going to get the brunt of it, but they will. And at 2:30 in the morning, it's different from midnight or 1:00. 2:30 is a whole another. Nothing happens good after 2:00. We all know that. My mother's taught us that. That's the truth.
I mean, nothing happens to me. I'm a pedantic one. Yeah, I mean, I guess from my perspective and, you know, it's, I do worry about the spall of it going down. And saying, you know, as we heard last, the last meeting, there are other facilities open to get food at this time in the very surrounding area.
Not in Summerville, but in like Wendy's.
Wendy's, that's a couple hundred yards away that doesn't abut through, you know, residential properties. They don't have that, you know, Quick Check or, you know, those other ones that are, you know, right in the immediate area. I do worry about the noise for the neighbors with the drive-through company behind. I kind of liked where the chairman was going with possibly an indoor option. Because I do think you get, you know, 2:00 a.m. traffic. And I assume most of it's going to be, I'm one of those that's out at 3:00 a.m. almost every morning. So I'm out there and I see a lot of police with a lot of people pulled over. And it's not because there was a second shift trying to get a bite to eat or anything like that. You know, and the shed being there, well, that property owner is going to take that shed down at any point too. So I wouldn't create some variance based on the fact that a neighbor is going to keep something to block the sound or that it's his responsibility to block that sound at that point. So I do have those concerns as, you know, the board was saying as well.
I don't know.
As far as the other variants, the other ones, I'm okay with the signs and moving the board with the, you know, the stipulation we said last time of afterwards getting the sound, just to verify. So with those, I have no issue with either the signage or the sound board or ordering board, whatever we call those now.
And the only thing I'll say to that is I think the board well knows every variance application stands on its own merit.
Yes.
You have a solid fence here. It's a really nice fence. So even if that should take the shed out of the equation, you got that. I don't know about the other establishments there. And I always go back to the Nadiachi case. I know this is not a use variance application, but that was the one where they said, if the board keeps approving the same variance over and over again, that's tantamount to a rezone and that's inappropriate use of the variance mechanism. As far as I know, this is the first one. I don't think, you know, you're starting a precedent. You have the right to, or the ability to cut it off at any time.
One of the things that the client said last time was that, you know, based upon the number of his other locations, this, for Taco Bell, this is, the hours from 12:00 to 2:30 are significant hours for their operation. So unlike other fast food, which may not, Taco Bell seems to be, that seems to be their sweet spot. And so I just want to ask you to be a little bit more open-minded about that particular thing about, you know, for instance, in his, in his, they own location, it's, you know, there's 46 drive-throughs at 2:00 to 2:30. That's quite a bit. And so in a constant...
I don't think I want 46 cars driving by my neighbor's property at 2:30 in the morning as well. You know, like sitting back going in line, music playing, whatever else it is. That's almost a counterargument from my end saying that it's going to be...
All I can say about that is, because I did that location too, that's going to turn out like, that's a 4:40 extension.
It was a play.
You're going to see a lot more volume.
Yeah, I'll just...
John, other than the fence and the shed and the location aspect of the Taco Bell, is there anything else that would differentiate Taco Bell from McDonald's or Dunkin' Donuts along that same area?
I thought what Jeff just said was helpful in terms of the specific end user and its experience. That's a market draw. That is an attraction at that hour. I don't know if the other end users have that type of... This operator, this end user has seen a peak or a higher demand at those later hours.
You opened up an issue that I want to follow up with. You said that now we have warehouse traffic. At this moment, we have no warehouses, I'm aware of, in the area. I don't think that will last forever. Having said that, what's the idea of having 18-wheelers stop over at Taco Bell and pick up their stuff? Do they drive in or do they park, which they do now, on Route 22 on their shoulder? And I have no problem with enforcement, but I don't want us to be in the enforcement business because we made this stupid mistake. If indeed warehouses come into the area, which I believe they may do, I agree, they're going to have a lot of traffic. I don't know that I want us to stop at Taco Bell on Route 22 in Somerset.
And here's the other point in that regard is a distinction between the warehouse worker who's driving a car to get back and forth and the truck driver. And this is just a general statement because I hear it a lot, is that the trucks are on the road during the day for the most part. The evening shift is getting everything packaged and ready for the next day, generally. So when I say, I'm thinking about the warehouse guy working on the conveyor there, the forklift, whatever, 2:00 he's going home to get his burrito or whatever, whatever he hits on the way home.
Yeah, I think I wanted the board, and I'm not testifying, but my client did say he has not had any complaints at all at this site whatsoever. And if he does, if that happens because of extended hours, he will, he will certainly, if he's told that's not working, you have to come back to this board, that's fine. He just wants to give it an opportunity. So because nobody has given any complaints.
Carol, what would be the mechanism to get them back to the board?
Well, I'm looking at some of the conditions that we've already talked about. One of them that I have is that they would have to come back to the board. There were any noise complaints in general. One of the other things we're looking at is post-construction. They have to meet and do a noise study and then meet with Mike to discuss. Another one in here that we talked about, okay. Should queuing cause problems in the access lane on the 202? They'd have to reappear before the board to discuss solutions by way of an application for many conditions. So what we could do is we could put in an obligation to come back before the board after three months, six months, address each one of those and see where we are with the understanding that the condition could be amended if it was causing a problem. We can kind of lump those things together. Well, any conditions you place on them will make it a conditional rule. This particular one would just obligate them to come back during whatever time period to address some of these issues that we're concerned with. Because it's not just the hours of operation of the drive-through. We've got the noise issues. We've got the, you know, the queuing concerns because we're moving that sign over to the, potentially moving that sign to the other location. So, I mean, we could kind of lump that all together and require, as opposed to coming back if there's an issue, require them to come back and make that presentation and have everybody have discussions to what are those conditions you can amend.
What's the mechanism to capture complaints?
It's complaint-driven.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be a formal complaint.
Yeah, it's a building department, the borough.
It's definitely a complaint to the owner.
It's my phone ringing at 2:00 in the morning.
Yeah. Well, I was different in that complaint to the owner of the property that did not get the right...
Doing things to the borough. Chris, actually, we go to the board of health. They enforce the noise.
Okay. And, you know, I just want to make one other comment heading here. Hearing some testimony that this is warranted for purposes of their operations, I just want to say that just strictly financial concerns or financial benefits, the applicant is not going to justify it. However, you heard some testimony with regard to fencing, with regard to, you know, the actual location that may make it a little bit different from the other locations. And as John said, each one is taken on its own merit. So I would, you know, encourage the board that's looking to go that route. And I would also put in any resolution that that variance would be granted, not only subject to the conditions, but based upon a testimony provided by the planner, by the traffic engineer, by the noise expert, you know, specifically relating to those facts and conclusions that were provided.
That's what my concern is, that I want to see the benefit to the town. I know we're saying that it's for that late-night worker, the shift worker, anything where I think it's already provided. I don't think that there's a lack of it. Nobody said that we don't have places for anybody to eat or get food at 2:30 in the morning. It's a lack of the better or 2:00 or whatever the one is at.
And Quick Check and 7-Eleven and these places in the oil can wait, have drive-in traffic, not drive-through traffic. There's a big difference there. So, you know, again.
The only other thing I'll throw out there for the board, just a couple of things that I didn't mention. Sometimes we see this again in the police regulations or the general regulations where they have limitations on hours of operation. And they say a business can extend past 12. Generally, two things. And the applicant would stipulate this. We just saw it in the town last night. A minimum of two employees on site if it's 12:00 a.m., so there will always be at least two people there. And a security device that's in operation approved by the local police or the central security station. So again, there's a direct line. It's already there now. But they will certainly stipulate that as well. So it's just an added layer of protection on the negative side. And the importance of having the drive-through on the outside as opposed to the inside is also a security issue. People are not going inside to the employees, keeping the patrons outside.
Two-year-old, good. Plus some shift workers.
Do we know what the hours of operation are at Wendy's? I know it's not a town, but I'm just curious.
I think it's 2:00 a.m.
Okay, so there's a reason, there's a limit. I would be more comfortable with moving in an hour and seeing how it goes. To see, to prove that, okay, we can operate at 1:00 in the morning and we're not having any problems, okay. Then we can come back in a time, a year from now and then say, okay, well, what's been the track record? How's it been going? And then forward. The hours are the thing because everything else is okay. The size of the sign, the minimis. Changing the speaker, that's a benefit. We understand that. We heard that testimony. I believe that it makes sense for the operations, for making it happen. The hour is the only thing that's holding us up.
And the board may wish to consider the converse of that as you try it to 2:30, do a six-month look back. And I'm seeing these look-back provisions now. See if it is going to bear.
Have you ever done that before?
You would automate a requirement to come back and determine whether any complaints are in the area. Is that what you're suggesting?
Wait, you can go anywhere.
So Carol, let me put from the legality standpoint, if we're going to do this look-back concept, the point is that they would have to come back and show us that it was for the benefit of...
Well, the problem I have with the look back is, to me, it's not ideal. If it works good for six months, the next year is hell. We're going to say, well, that's six months, we're done with it.
I mean, yeah, I always...
Right, I mean, it has to be...
I don't see how it would be to see to...
I assume that's the most part, so we have a motion in a second so we can discuss some of the...
Well, we need to open the door.
For questions that John is willing to answer.
What would my suggestion be?
How old are the...
Anybody have any questions?
Somebody asked about what kind Wendy's closes closer to 1:00 or 2:00.
Identify yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Okay, I am 100% comfortable. I understand the security issues involved with allowing people inside the store during those late hours. And I'm really on the fence because 2:30 in the morning is pretty late. And the potential for problems exists. So I'm not sure what the solution is except to either go till 1:00 and have them come back and say, okay, we've had no problems. And I think, I think on the other side of that is the neighbors were noticed and we have not seen any neighbors here for this application.
And the neighbors were noticed with regard to the change as well. So that's perfectly fair. Now, we could bifurcate the vote as well if that's something you wanted to just take the hours separately, do all the other variances and waivers outlawed in my report first. I don't know where everybody's head might be.
I would... But I'd like to comment. If I buy a house right behind Route 22, I am going to expect some noise. It's inevitable. We get this. People buy a house on schoolhouse lane and they complain there's traffic. So you buy a house near a house, you know you're going to have impact. But if you do your diligence, you find out the stores are only open till midnight, you have a mindset, oh, that's okay. I can win with that. Now, this board decides to change that hour and it may not affect that immediate neighborhood now, but five years from now, much change. So I'm just not comfortable in extending it at all. It's working now till midnight. We haven't had complaints from noise, police, to my knowledge, it's been an invisible operation. The application before us calls for 2:30 and if it stays at 2:30, I can't support it.
Okay, let's bifurcate the vote. Because I don't want to see the other issues.
And we can go down because...
So we need a motion with regard to the waivers and the variances that were outlawed in my report. The conditions that I had, just for your consideration, were obviously to comply with any... Uh, the conditions that I had, just for your consideration, uh, were obviously, um, to comply with any and all other comments in Mike's report. Um, move up the ADA space to the location to satisfaction of board engineer planner. Uh, make parking spaces that could be blocked by queuing for employee parking, again, to the satisfaction of Mike. Um, queuing, should queuing cause problems in the access lane onto two oh two? The applicant.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. I had twenty-two.
If it goes to two oh two.
We got the same problem.
We're really in trouble.
Twenty-two.
Nothing like a taco pal.
To agree up here with board of boards to discuss solutions by way of an application of many conditions. Uh, compliance of all state and local noise ordinance requirements and standards. Um, post-construction property meeting with Mike to make sure that there's a fifty DVA measurement sound. Yep, noise study. Um, come back with noise complaints. Um, and then what I said about, you know, that the C two variances are granted based upon a testimony provided.
So move second for everything but the, correct, everything but the hours. Okay.
Freddie Devine.
Yes.
Dennis Sol.
Yes.
Samuel Brady.
Yes.
Jason Carrasco.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Christopher Ratt.
Yes.
Does somebody wanna make something, a motion on the other?
I'll make a motion to vote on the hours of extension from twelve to two thirty. I, I don't have the wording in front of me.
I have a classification question. On Mike's report.
Can I ask a question before you vote?
Yes.
If we agreed to one o'clock, would, would that change the minds of the board because it would give us a little bit more time? And, uh, we do think that there's a need for it. Um, not a financial need, that's irrelevant, but there's a need for it in the community. So if we went to one o'clock week and we, we modified our request, would that be amenable to the board?
Is that your proposal? Is that, is that your proposal?
That's the proposal. I can support it. I could support that.
I just have a clarification question. Mike's report says, posed hours from five AM to two thirty PM.
It would be five AM to one AM.
One, so, well, I guess that's the other issue, because right now it's open, it's opened at seven, so now you can open at five AM.
You open at seven AM?
That's what it's, that was now.
Seven is open. You had given us an approval, you had given us an approval for five, but we never opened five. And we don't, and we don't desire to open five. We are not a big breakfast, uh, you know, provider.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to clarify that.
Seven is fine. Seven is fine.
All right, so then the motion would be to, to amend the application to request that the hours be amended from seven AM to one AM.
With a, with a stipulation about a field test.
All prior to.
Not exceed how many months?
So.
No, I think that's.
You wanna go with just one regardless of what happened?
I would just leave it for, I would leave it alone at that. No, no, I wouldn't do two thirty, no.
I wouldn't, I, without, without some kind of status there for a few months, I couldn't support you.
Well, we do have in here that they would come back if there were noise complaints. And that's what you're probably going to get. You're not gonna get, you know, queuing's already, already provided for, so what you're gonna get is a problem with noise. So whether it's during the day, whether it's at twelve o'clock, whether it's at one o'clock. So I think that's, that's captured in there.
I, I guess my issue, you know, is just as a whole of, is this the need for the community for a C two variance? I guess that's my whole question, I just, is for a financial benefit. Which way are we, you know, what are we approving it for?
For the greater good, to their testimony.
Correct.
But it's not the only gain in town.
Okay.
Somebody wanna move it?
So we're doing the one o'clock with them coming back after a period of time, to see if there's any.
That's your motion. It's, it's whoever's motion. So right now, like I said, we have a condition in there that they have to come back if there are noise complaints. If you wanna impose an additional condition with regard to this, you can certainly do that.
I would, I would move it with those one AM and after three months, six months? Six.
Six months.
Six months. Six months, go back to review.
A year, because a year gives you all seasons, warm scan. But tell, but tell people, don't date somebody that's been on stage for a year.
Too late for most of us, like.
Generational difference.
All right, so they're coming back after one year to do after change.
If they wanna change it to extend it, we can cross that death, but you gotta have something under your belt.
Yeah, and if there are issues, that's where we will, yeah.
So we're gonna have to come back here at any rate after one year to say, we're here before you, there's been no complaints. Can we continue to do that?
I think what I'm hearing, and you guys are being wrong, if you want to come back to extend it, pass one year. Pass one o'clock AM. You have to wait a whole year to do it. So we have a whole year.
Okay, okay, understood.
I can second that. And I'll repeat it, Chairman, I, I, I don't see the the greater good being served to outweigh the potential detriment, even in that first two. So I, I'll leave the vote on this.
Well, we need a motion, a second, and then we'll vote.
We have a motion.
Yeah, motion, second.
I grant it. And again, the C two, as a test, I don't feel it meets it. I don't, we'll see how it looks.
Okay.
Freddie Devine.
Yes.
Dennis Sol.
No.
Samuel Brady.
Yes.
Jason Carrasco. No. Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Christopher Rattick.
Yes.
Okay, next up we have a referral from the Borough Council on a request for zoning change.
Mr. Chairman, before we begin, as a consulting with the Board Attorney, I'm gonna ask that you recuse from this because if this is voted on in the affirmative, it comes to the Borough Council for a decision. And in my role as mayor, I am, I am not allowed to vote on a zoning change. So I feel I should not participate in the discussion at this, at this level. Well, I have.
Seems, seems to be a, is on council, or anybody who's on council.
I'd probably be the only one with a conflict because I do have to vote on it. He could, he got, he doesn't have a vote, so he can talk his butt off.
I mean, it can't because he's birthday, right? I'm sorry, it can't.
I'm, I'm enjoined by statute, I cannot vote.
No, so, since he can't vote, then I can. I'm the one that's got more potential conflict than he does.
I would leave that to your discretion and, and the attorney, if you feel he's conflicted, I, I, I can't answer.
We vote here all the time, on days that we send to the council for a vote.
Well, that's correct, and without them, we don't inform.
But I think we would have a problem then because we don't have enough street purpose.
Now, the, the question is though, and, and what we're doing here is making a recommendation for not making the vote.
Right, that's true.
So.
Yes.
Um, that's really what we're talking about here. We're gonna hear the testimony, you're gonna hear the reasons why they're looking for it. Any change would be initiated by a governing body, have to come back before the planning board for then your actual formal, you know, vote recommendations. So we're not at that point yet. This is really just a precursor discussion.
And this is labeled as a discussion. So as far as I'm concerned, let's have a discussion and see what occurs.
There's no ordinance introduction, it's by council.
Introduced as a resolution or a.
Right.
Which is probably a good idea too, if someone's going on. I, 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 I would, I would need, I mean, you guys do too, with young council accounts.
I think, and all due respect to this, I think our situation, my business, Mr. Brady, will be allowed to vote. And anything that's at this board, I think. Right, I. It has no value because I can't participate in that discussion. So I'll go to, say the.
Okay.
Say you're going home, I'm.
No, no, I don't know. I'll say.
Interestingly.
Yeah, it is, always.
Eric, are you?
Well, I thought we, we're basically the help of the conversation.
Okay.
So, um, uh, we'll chime in. Uh, do you wanna swear him in?
Yeah, we're, we're all new at this. Just upfront, you know, a lot of.
Okay, so, uh, you're not offering any testimony at this.
Well, we might so, why don't you, um, swear?
Well, again, it's not a public hearing, so we're just having a discussion, that's all. I think at this point, probably.
We could facilitate the discussion to answer any questions.
Just for our good name and position, I think.
Yeah, absolutely, so we can get on.
Okay, um.
So we got Eric, Watson, and Dave.
Craig.
Craig. All right, I was, I'm so sorry. It's really bad.
Take spittle, okay.
I didn't say that. I didn't say that.
Look, they save the best for last.
Give them a quick smarter. I'm just saying.
Okay, thanks.
Issue we have in hand here is basically want a parking. And as I see it, and Karen, if you disagree with me, I also see an issue for spot zoning. And it's not like, and we've done, done things like this before if we're extending a contiguous area. You know, we've got, we've got one zone here and we make it, just extend it a lot. This is different, and I'm concerned about that issue.
This is like changing the hole of the donut. Because everything else around it is not gonna change.
It's an interesting analogy.
Right?
Correct.
As opposed to if it was completely stood up area.
Right, and, and what it's, what it's continuous with.
Neither is not here, so you can, you can talk about spot zoning.
Um, what it is contiguous with is the B two, which has a parking requirement. That's right. So, and, and I, I know that when the applicant came in for his approval, parking was significant.
It's, it's always gonna be insured, uh, it's fine, suppression.
Anybody else?
While, while on our side, I think, one, it is spot zoned now. It's on the outside of the donut right now, because it's in, it's the only lot on the other side of the tracks in the redevelopment or the landfill, whatever you wanna call it. Um, so it, it, I mean, it even has a special section in, in that voting limits. So it's one hundred, the only reason I see, because I went through and looked at, you know, various redevelopment reports and everything, I think the only reason it's in there is because it's labeled train station, and it just got lumped in with the train station, which is now on the other side of the road.
Well, it's on, it's on the other side of the tracks, but it's still, it's still contiguous.
The only difference is you can't spot zone in redevelopment law.
Yeah, but. It is contiguous as well, I gotta jump in here. Because the redevelopment area includes the railway right of way, of which the station is contiguous with. So it's not the other side. And also addressing the, the one zoning issue that picked it out, that was at the, the request of the then owner to change the use because there was no use proposed for that station other than for it to remain as it was, office. And the owner at that time came to the board and said, I've got a bank I'd like to put in there, would you consider it? And there was a lot of discussion here. And ultimately, we changed the redevelopment plan to do that. So that, um, while spot zoning may apply, I think there's a stretch in this one.
The, the, it's actually, if you think about it though, it's no, it's no longer an office. It's, it's really a continuation of Division Street. Because you could sit there at, at that area right outside there and watch what goes on in Division Street. You could hear the bands playing on Division Street, it's really a continuation of, of that. The fact that there's two office built, or the post office setting and the office building on either side, the contin, it's contiguous with the, the Division Street development, and that's, and that's the B one. And it really, the traffic that's gonna go to this site is foot trap mostly. It's gonna be coming from all the apartments around the area that are, have quadrupled in size since I sold it. Um, and it, it's also going to attract the people who are going downtown and who are going to Division Street and the restaurants downtown. This is a restaurant facility now, it's not an office. And it really makes more sense to have this as part of that zone rather than, than being the only thing on that side of the street to sit between that and the trains and tracks to be what it is.
But I guess I'll quote the mayor saying, uh, Eric is saying essentially that this would be helpful for the borough to have this used for the new purpose. And that would add to the quality of the downtown, if that is what the mayor might say.
Correct, and, and also we're, uh, uh, the owner is, uh, proposing to donate a park area in that area that will basically look right down to Division Street. Um, and that is actually near and dear to my heart because, what's the name of it, my, my, member of my son and.
And Eric, I think we all appreciate that.
And, 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 and by making this into the B one, the coverage area, the coverage is, is no longer an issue. Because in the B one, the coverage is no longer an issue by donating that, that way. We tried to get parking in the area, but they, uh, on the other side where the parking lot is, and we couldn't because of the curve of the road, because when they put Veterans Memorial Drive-In, they went around the train station making that other section that is now part of the New Jersey Transit totally useless for any other reason other than park. So, anyway, we, we, we feel that it's not spot zoning. If I think it is spot zoned now, we, we were, um, we're, we're part of the, the downtown improvement district as well. Um, and we're part of a specialist.
Yeah, you know, I, I think, you know, like you said, it, it's on, if you look at the other side, I think it's a, it's an opportunity um, to kind of cap Division Street. And if you look at the, again, if you go back to the report, you have an illustrated concept development plan, which is specifically highlighted from Main Street to the train station as one of the connection points to the, to Main Street. So, again, it's, it's got that capital, you know, whatever you wanna call it, you know, it creates that T and that connection to Main Street, because Eric is right. All your foot trap is, is gonna go right past the, the former train station and right up to Division Street into Main Street. So I think it, with the exception of, obviously, you got a big office building and a post office. Those are kind of the, the outliers, I think, more so than this. So, you know, yeah, I get that it's kind of bisecting the B two zone, but, and we're here for our lot. But I think continuing the B one right down to this lot would be, I think, again, it's in, it's in the report. It's in both two thousand seventeen and, or two thousand seven and two thousand seventeen. It's the same map, it's, you can show the three points going up to Main Street, and this is specifically one.
And the use is more consistent with what's down there.
Yeah, I, I think that's the other thing. It was kind of left, again, it was left out before pulled into, on the other, the south side of the tracks. Because it was Eric's office, uh, there really wasn't much of it. But I think it's got a new life to it, like I said. This is a new opportunity to tie in and bring it into Main Street as opposed to an outlier.
Freshwater, I mean, the uses right now are allowed, right? You guys weren't here for use variances.
Yes.
Again.
They were here for use.
No, the, the uses are allowed.
It's allowed, but again, if you look at the, the redevelopment plan, there is this specific paragraph that
For this lot.
For this specific lot.
So that's why I was going, Craig, today. I think the easier lift is just to amend the redevelopment plan to take the parking. Because what you're asking, I don't know how you smot spots on, I understand your argument, that you're proposing a one lot, B one surrounded by B two. That's the, that, that's the reality. I understand everything you're saying, but you're still carving out one light lot for the purposes of parking. Whereas it's in the redevelopment zone, in my way of looking at it, it should, the council and the planning board want to do that, it's much easier to amend the plan.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Well, if you change the zoning, you're going to have to amend the plan anyhow and take it out of the plan.
Well, you're saying that you can amend the plan anyhow, regardless.
Whatever happens, the plan has. Whatever happens, the plan has to be amended.
Right, so if you amend the plan, it's.
Because there's no underlying zone.
Right. I, right now, Craig is right, we put, we put a whole section there because it was absent from the station house, you know. So we could certainly amend that one section to simply address parking, and the whole problem goes away, should the board want to eliminate parking, or the council, for that one lot.
And that, I think, might also relieve the, the board of an issue, because I did start looking at some of the cases about all this. Cresco versus Dumont case that cites Colin versus Ford, Public Works of Patterson, talks about whether the request is designed merely to relieve the lot of the burden of a restriction. And that's why I was wondering, what else can we talk about other than the parking? And that's where I'm concerned, that amending the redevelopment plan.
It's all, it's all.
Will get you to where you want to be without that concern.
And Colin's saying.
You have to amend it.
We have to amend it anyhow, so we're there anyhow. We probably do it in our lifetime. But I'm not sure about that, okay?
One of the downsides of.
And when we amend the coverage issue.
The downsides are, there's always a downside, is where, or the parking is going to be provided. I think, I think some of the testimony, or at least I think the testimony is going, that they're going to have foot traffic. And they're not going to have a great parking demand. That's.
There's no testimony.
That's, that's why I think this will.
Right, yes.
What Craig is saying is it's a connection, it's foot traffic, you see it, everybody's walking down there.
So question here, so.
I'm going to do some junk, Craig.
We have, we have improved uses.
So you want the plan?
These businesses are going to be there anyway. Whatever light we do, we talk about here, there's still going to be people coming to that one or walking.
There's another concern too, because I got to jump in again, because it is in a redevelopment area. It's on a bend. If you put more foot traffic there, we know that's a speedway. And how are we going to manage that? And what do we put in the plan to mitigate traffic?
Well, there's always been talk about putting some traffic mitigation.
We can probably put the.
The speed bumps.
Well, what we do is not, you're going to have the development south of the tracks coming to Main Street, no matter what.
Yeah, using Bridge Street though, we, we've already seen that occur.
Well, I used to see people, a county put, or I think it was the county that put that fence up to direct the traffic to the crosswalk.
No.
But what about, but at the same time, what about the droves of people that come on the train? Like I've, I've been out on Main Street, and there, 20 people come off the train and they walk up Division.
Yeah, they don't even go to the crosswalk.
They can't get out of the station currently unless they come from the city on the Division Street side. If they're coming from anywhere else, they've got to get out onto Bridge Street, because there's fencing everywhere.
What about the tunnels? There's two tunnels.
There's only, the tunnel will only service the westbound traffic, because you can't get out of that tunnel and go into the redevelopment. There's a fence there. You've got to go out, onto Bridge Street, walk down the street and come back into the development, or go through the parking garage. There is no direct pedestrian access to the stuff south of the station right now.
Just to jump in real quick, Mike, on your report, Note Six, Plan Board vetted their land use for Sylou over a year ago, has something changed?
That's a question. The question is, we were here, and that's why, as the soft ball pitch is, we were here, and we had a parking plan in place.
Yeah.
So upon the third restaurant come back, we're going to do the analysis and see how it works. And I think the process, the thought process was that the applicant developer would have two restaurants in operation, and we see how it works prior to the third operations. My understanding that that might not be, they might be more, what it might be asking is to put all three online at once.
Or in short, at this point.
At this point, correct.
It's been a long time to get to where we are, and, and also, there was some discussion at that point that maybe we can go for a zone change to, to make it so that the parking requirement goes away, because it's really part of the downtown, it's no longer an outlined piece of property. It, it's really flows well, people coming from the apartment store to walk by there, people going down the avenue to see it. We have a park there, I think people are going to come, get their meals, or sit there, let the kids play on, on, on the gym in between french fries or whatever, but.
And access on Veterans Memorial is going to have to be addressed anyway, because with all the, the new construction and crossing there, I mean, it's going to be.
And it's always been an issue, I mean, ever since.
It's always been an issue.
It's always been the, up for discussion about speed bumps and things like that.
Yeah, and to kind of answer your question, I think where you guys are going, part of the approval for last year was that we do a pedestrian study.
Yes.
And, although Bernie stepped out, that was his big concern, that crossing. So whether we need to make modifications to that after the study, but. Yeah, I, I kind of, yes, it, it does pertain to the parking, but I mean, even if you look at this just as a straight zoning thing, which I tried to do, I mean, especially with this, the exhibit and the redevelopment, the way it's, it's basically encouraged. So, I can, I get what you're doing, we're, we're kind of solving the problem, let's solve the problem as easily as possible. But I was just looking at, if you bring the B one all the way down, it's in line with even this specific diagram. The ones that create the problem are the post office and post office plus.
Right.
So if we solve the problem by doing it the easiest way.
And, and if we, and we do that, I'd like to modify the coverage requirement, because coverage isn't going to change. Part of the land was taken by New Jersey Transit, if we give the park away, the, you know, coverage, you know, numbers change.
I mean, I, I understand that, so this is the board knows, the applicant has made an application for amended site plan to come in to address some of the conditions of resolution. I just haven't, I don't know if I deemed it completely yet, but it's, it's in the process.
It's in the plan.
They, they've submitted an application, I do believe the development fees were put up. So I have to do a completeness review, and then it'll be scheduled for a hearing to address that, what Jason was just talking about, conditions of the approval.
And because that was a note I had, they'll have to amend those conditions anyway, but we're in the process of doing that.
And, yeah, and, and obviously, in the best case scenario, we'd have some real world pedestrian studies data presented in the next hearing about what's going on. The problem is that the restaurants will not be open before that, is that correct statement?
Yes, pretty much.
So, I, I mean, I, I guess we could do a study based on existing conditions in the summer, and then overlay what we think the impact's going to be from the restaurants.
I mean, Craig.
He probably could build a D one.
I mean, it's, it's summertime, we have a lot of pedestrian activity right now, right? We have the, Division Street's popping, we have activity going. So maybe we can get some data absent of the restaurants, and then overlay something, Craig, to get some data that's up for discussion. We also have Somerset Development that's really nearing completion, we have Pulte, but, but, so I mean. Right. Our, our volume is going to change, there's no question, the volume is going to change.
Are you near COs on that side?
There's already COs been issued, I mean, Colin, like, several of the units have been sold. Like that one side.
We've done.
Yeah, they, they've sold 50 yard townhouses already. We're going to end up with 470 new residential units there. That's going to make a significant impact, not just on Bridge Street, but people will then use the tunnel, and it's going to create chaos at the pedestrian crossing on Vass, because they're going to come through the tunnel and they're going to stack up. And even now, and I, I tend to driver intent just a little bit myself, people don't take notice of the flashing pedestrian warning lights. The speed limit on that street is 25 mile an hour, and the average is about 40. And they, they sort of kick the brakes a little bit going into the bend, but watch people jump.
You know, the rumble strips on Altima, they're in mid-block actually at this point. Rumble strips on Cliff, I think they're down on one or two other streets.
It's, it's not something I would argue against, Grant. We, we put those medians in, in an attempt to slow it down and narrow the road.
People go on the medians.
They, they, they didn't take any notice of that thing at all. They didn't blow down there anyhow.
Oh, those medians are, are a joke.
They ran them over.
I don't want them over whatever's in the middle, whatever you.
Well, that was the one.
We're senior citizen bowling pins, is what I thought.
Yeah.
You turn around and not going down, that's a.
And I, you know, the rumble strips are, are, are a, an oral warning that something's going on. I don't know whether, with, with, with the increase in pedestrian traffic, I'm not so much concerned about the speed of the vehicles, because it's going to remain relatively constant. Unless you put a big rumble strip in, then you're going to have the firemen coming on complaining, you're taking the bottom out of their trucks. So it, it's a delicate balance, and I don't have an answer, but I know you're going to have a lot more pedestrians probably within 18 months.
Just a basic question, off the table are stop signs? That's unacceptable in our block.
You've got to take into account the human factor here, they don't take notice of them.
No, I mean, a real stop, a regular, old fashioned stop sign, not flash light stop sign.
They don't stop.
They don't stop. We had those around the new construction. Stop, go this way, do that. You know, we could have lit it up in, in spotlights, and people did what they want, when they want, and that would be.
Okay, what I'm getting at, with or without the zone change, this whole issue is coming up to the board probably within two months. Because they're looking to amend the resolution, specifically pertaining to parking essentially, and phasing in.
And, and a third.
And, but the phasing in, and which, and the third was phased because to get data. So we're dealing with this.
Well, I think the third was, it was sort of phased, but they didn't have a specific pattern, where they, the first two they did.
It was once to do, before the third moved in, we'd have data from the first two, and then we could see what the parking, if anything, would require for the third one, so that we have all this company language. So they're coming back to amend the, the application. So we submitted it, so within two months, we're going to have the same discussion. So what I'm saying, just as I was thinking is, I don't want to really table this, but I think that meeting might shed some more light, and we can get some data, and what Colin says is true. I understand the point.
Occasionally, I'm right.
Well, you, you make the point that the data we get now, we're going to have 400 more people, so how do we, how, it's going to be more than 400 people.
Right. Oh, yeah.
More than units. More than units.
But what I'm getting at is, the applicant, I think, is going to make the, trying to make the argument, that the establishments there will be based on pedestrian use, that's what we're servicing the establishment. So I'm trying to figure out a way that he can get data, or somehow we can flush that question out.
A variance in the whiteboard stuff.
At the end of the day, if we, if we need parking, we're going to have to find parking for our customers or for our employees that the customers can park. At the end of the day, it's, it's, it's a business decision. And we're not, you know, if we're, if we're losing business because we're not parking, we'll send our employees to the deck or whatever and, and buy space from New Jersey Transit and have the space there. Because it's a business at that point. And the same thing with the people on Main Street and Division Street. You know, if they don't, there's, there's no parking, they park in the back and they, they, you know, rent spaces. So if we, if we do this by way of amending the, the redevelopment plan, I think that's, that's fine, and, and, and you want to wait till the next hearing, or you want to start that process now? And are you, everybody on board with, with doing it that way so it's not?
You have to be real specific if we're going to amend the plans, and maybe we wait.
Yeah, I want to have a whole redevelopment plan.
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, you, you can probably tell me I'm wrong, but right now, it's literally one paragraph. It's, it's as specific as you can get right now.
Yeah. And just to throw this in there too, I mean, if you guys are coming back, probably in two months or so, could ask for a variance in talking as well, based upon what.
Right now, we, as far as the approval, we have an agreement for off-site parking. So, yeah, I mean, we can, but I, I, I think you just want to get the.
Parking issue out of the way, and, and be able to put the park together and, and, and get that going.
Not to want to make work for us, but I was, I kind of agree with Kara in a way, asking for variance might be an easier solution, because, you know, once, we're, we're, we're amending redevelopment in that area anyway because of police station, what have you. So I don't know, how, how hard, how.
Different redevelopment area, different plan.
Yeah, I know, it's a redevelopment area, but we're still doing redevelopment there and, and on the town. So as I said, can we do it in our lifetime? Or would the variance be the simplest thing to do?
Well, you can't really, it, it's a deviation in a redevelopment area, it's not a variance. Therefore, it can, it can be done without great issue at all, it's just, it, it's semantics, but we have to amend the plan. I think that's the, the most straightforward way, should you, if, if the board says, yeah, okay, we'll make that recommendation to council, let's go to council anyhow, because we can touch it.
So wait, let me understand this, so the parking requirements are coming from the redevelopment plan and not the zone that it defaults to?
No, the redevelopment plan says for this lot, the B two uses and parking.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what Kara said, it's just that it deferred to the B two use.
So once it defers to the B two, it becomes a variance that you could.
Yes.
Grant without amending the redevelopment plan.
Yes.
I'm, I'm just, just saying.
What I'm getting at, do we have any more data than what was presented last, last year?
We don't, because, because this.
Nothing's changed.
We don't have any.
There's nothing in there.
So, I mean, but your, your point is, that's going to, that's going to basis now, and then, and then.
I mean, I'm, I'm trying to get some closure on this, but if you come back and say the same arguments we heard a year ago.
There's nothing there.
There's nothing, you got to.
Some numbers aren't going to work right now.
And I don't know if I'm watching, can down the road and then have a situation where we have not planned for the huge increase that we believe is going to happen in, in traffic. And I'd rather be proactive on this than we say, well, do it while it's, it's data study. We know darn well that that's going to, you just not know how much. It's going to, it's going to boom, it's booming now.
And, and, and the impact of this building, in terms of the increased traffic, is not going to be significant compared to the 400 whatever you think units.
Right. It's booming now.
So our, our impact, we're, we're thinking we're going to siphon some of those 400 whatever units off, and people who are coming down Division Street off, that are going to come, so they're, they're not, it's not going to be a destination location for people, it's going to be a walking den location, as they're walking past, oh gee, here's a nice park, here's this and that, and, and a restaurant, let's get, take out and sit outside.
It really isn't, the restaurant is relevant to the issue, which is the increase in volume that we're going to see, that we know is going to happen.
That's, there's still saying that the parking is the issue, though. Because isn't that the only thing we're actually looking at, is the parking? We're not looking at the pedestrian, solving the pedestrian problems for the world that we're going to have.
But we're all contributing to that.
Correct. I understand that, I'm just saying that the, the actual bearings or the, the reason for the change on the zone is the parking requirement.
Well, I think, I think what, what Craig's referring to is in the one paragraph, because we tried very, very hard to say very, very little. Was that there, there was a parking requirement, and we deferred to B two, because at that time, it was proposed to be a bank with a drive-thru. The, the overall plan says, yeah, food establishments are allowed, but it doesn't, you know, just coming back at you, mate, doesn't really say if, if, what would be required in a food establishment in the redevelopment plan. So what, what Craig's talking about is specific to a bank with a drive-thru. If we're going to address the parking, we do it in the redevelopment plan, we just, we'll find the words to take the parking away, if that's what the board wants.
Again, I guess that's my question, is how we want to do, is eliminate changing the parking without knowing the actual, because, you know, I think to Mike's point was, that was kind of, a year ago, you said, well, that's great, we can get the two in here, it's all walking traffic, we know it works, and the third restaurant, who cares then, we know it already works, this is what they're going to have, they're not going to have a parking issue. I mean, if, you know, I, I would have a problem if a restaurant came in here and said, well, we're not going to have any, you know, we, we don't think we're going to have anybody driving to the restaurant, so we, we don't want, we want a variance to not have it.
I mean, the one we're.
Being very drunk.
The one we're bringing in is a smoothie place. It's got five seats. So, I mean, it totally will.
And it's still.
That's, I would say.
And it's still, what's the other places?
And then you have a park, and now the park is actually a lead-in or a good tie-in with the smoothie place. So I mean, when we were contemplating the last application, that, at least I was thinking was more of a high-end, you know, estate place, whatever, that now we have a smoothie place and five schools. So even the parking demand is going to be nothing.
You mind if I put the other one, sir?
Uh, the one in the back is Mike's Deli, so that's going to be morning. The one in the front is still a meeting.
Yeah, they're just having a few taxis, almost all okay, and carry out.
And then even, I think, what we were saying is that, you know, because the parking lot also has a stipulation for the taxis. So they're actually gonna incorporate taxis for delivery. So, I mean.
Well, there's a decent amount of transit or something, right?
Yeah, it's actually with the borough.
The borough.
And the taxis can be parked there.
In fact, at one time, we talked about maybe, since the pick-up and drop-up really should be on the other side at this point now that they opened that up.
It ain't open right now.
No, but when it opens up, that might be something.
Well, there will be a prison.
That would be the.
Drop place. On the other side, yes.
Pick-up and drop-up. It's much safer there.
Not as convenient as where it is now.
I think part of our recommendation to the council is that down the road, we need to address the conflict between automobiles and pedestrians in that location.
Yeah, that, that.
Yeah, but we've been, that, that's one thing I said that you were very specific about that with our, our original approval. And that's what's driving the pedestrian studies to what we do in that particular area.
Yeah, we have to study on the, that's the primary.
It's all, it's all that's, the study was done to make it go from two lanes to one lane which are turned though. That's about ten years old.
Probably.
I mean, I, I'm just thinking that we threw out the idea with the driver about coming back to the board, checking it out. But let's say there's no parking and as Colin says, we have a big traffic crossing problem. At that point, it's a borough issue. It's not really an applicant issue.
No, of course not.
So saying come back and get traffic, say at that point, that's, that's just a problem. It really becomes a burden problem, a borough problem, not an applicant. So why haven't we gone back for that?
I mean, they don't really have any partners thing at all.
There's, there's limited parking. There's limited parking, right?
Well, we, I think the big thing is, you know, we asked for a variance and that was the condition that we do the pedestrian study. So we are.
Right. For parking, the issue of the volume of pedestrian traffic and the mix between pedestrian traffic and behavioral traffic is still gonna be a borough issue, like I said. And it's something that we're not asking anyone to solve except for ourselves, but we have to solve.
Right.
And again, you know, how much parking would you be able to provide to even mitigate? And you have probably very little because you still have the volume of pedestrian traffic. So, you know, it, it's, it's almost irrelevant. Your parking, it's almost irrelevant. It's more in terms of what volume we're gonna anticipate over there.
Yeah, because right now, we're in twelve spots onsite and a variance of seven off. So with the new, I think, it's open to being higher than onsite.
Well, well, maybe, maybe what we do is when we come back in two months, we, we see if we can amend that to just needs a twelve onsite and he visited afterwards to see, once we get the restaurants up and running, whether or not then come back in a year or whatever. And meanwhile, we could talk about amending the, the.
I think that would be the ball rolling on your behalf, they've solved the immediate problem or the next two months problem.
And we have a condition to come back.
A condition to come back, and I think that we're partially solved what Colin's bringing up. We'll have, it'll be six months or a year from now, we'll have more data.
Yeah, right.
But again, data is a pedestrian which we shouldn't be responsible for for a while.
I, I agree, but what I'm saying is I think we can address this in the application. And then get your operation open. And then we'll see how this works out with landfill and pedestrian knowledge.
And meanwhile, we, we, we could work, right? Work on getting the, the, the redevelopment plan amended to.
Right, less, less parking. I mean, I think the area is, is now got to the point where parking is gonna just add to the woes that we have. It's not gonna help it that way.
Right, I, I'm, I'm taking the approach, we can hand us on the site plan that Kara brought up. I like, I prefer that approach without messing with the redevelopment plan to know exactly. Did they picture?
Yes.
Because it's what the doctor says, it's never, we always say it's easy, it's never easy. So I'd rather address more than one item, Colin, the redevelopment plan and the landfill. Shouldn't we do something else with that?
The park situation, how, how do you want that handled? Because that's gonna change the coverage.
The ratio. Let's have the council, whether they wanna accept the land or not.
Sure, like, like. The coverage is a variance, a variance.
Is part of the application subdivision?
Oh, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to.
Not right now.
Not right now, that's what, I'm trying to figure out how, if we wanna add that to this.
Is the concept that you're gonna do the park and then give it to the town? Is that, is that what it is basically?
The, the, yeah. Yeah. They, the applicant has agreed to donate some land, fund the initial construction of that.
We've got experience with that too, and it's not real successful.
Yeah.
Right, but the applicant's not focused on how everything else has worked out, correct? Is that where we're at? We're gonna focus on the immediate issue, the next thing, being the three restaurants, the proposal and the parking.
Yes, and then we'll, and then hopefully we can get a variance for the parking and then come back in a year and be ready.
Right.
And meanwhile.
Well, there's, there's no place to make more parking.
No, no.
There was a get it offsite, there was a buy it offsite.
Yeah, there's what we talked about that.
And, and if we do offsite, it's gonna be for the employees anyway. And if we need to, we're gonna do that no matter what.
Which even if he parks offsite, it still puts pedestrians across the street. So it comes back to how we handle that.
But again, it's gonna be that issue no matter what, whether we're there or not.
Right, of course.
I did, I did have a question. In the package that Craig gave us last week, there's a letter that mentions towards the end about questioning whether or not that's a good occasion for a park, for a pocket park.
Well, that's because of the pedestrian issue with the, with the crosser.
This is all tied together.
It's all, it's all been.
Basically, my understanding between the applicant and the council. That is, it's not in the planning.
No, no, but I'm sure the planning, the council probably asked for input from the, from the.
Well, right now, it hasn't been asked.
I, I, yeah. But also, I also wanna try to be transparent to the board.
So what, what is our recommendation to the council?
Nothing, nothing.
And the other thing.
In two months, when we come back for, for the application, we're gonna amend that to.
Yeah, well, we have to say something. It's gonna say something that the, the planning board recommends doing nothing right now. We're gonna handle it on the site plan, uh, application, the initial stuff. And we're still proposing that a pedestrian study be done for down the road to fix or ameliorate, whatever we have to do, a potential pedestrian issue, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if you took the light on the north end of Division Street and put it on the south, it'd be more useful.
Right.
Actually, that, that light on the north end of Division Street provides a break in traffic.
Yeah.
Before making a left.
So it's the same point as.
It's triggered, it's triggered by somebody driving into that left.
People heading east, turning left on the maple.
Yeah, you just, you get there too long and the queue left lane, you can't, the right side, you have to go.
Just a point right there.
That left turn.
Okay.
So if you get in there too long, triggers the light.
Three vehicles triggered.
I know. You hold to on that idea?
Nope.
Chairman, DOT. The NJ DOT guy.
So it just wasn't included.
We have one more on the agenda.
Thank you, everyone, good seeing everybody.
Thank you, guys. Well, guys, you're not.
Thank you, sir. That's wrong. No, no, it's, it's totally.
I could do more draft. I just summarized what the application I went through in detail. Okay, and this is the application where it's two large Amazon-style warehouses that are thirty-eight feet and change that's gonna demolish the four commercial buildings, protect the hospital. And put two big Amazons warehouses that only have access on two twenty-two eastbound. So if you think about it, it has access to a highway, which is the problem. The problem is where that highway is. It's the separation of twenty-two, right near the junction of two eighty-seven. And if you really take a look at the area on the map of how you get to the facility, if you're coming from, anywhere from the east, from two eighty-seven, twenty-two, you end up with a very convoluted U-turn. Either you get off and you take two twenty-eight, which is east, you know, you take down Union, twenty-eight, and you have to make the right on Gasta, which is not conducive to fifty-three percent.
We already have two crossing guards there.
Or you take twenty-two westbound and you try to make the clover leave, which is already illegal, left-hand terms are already illegal there. You can't make them, but you know a truck will try that. Or you have to go up to the intersection of two oh-two and deal with that challenging situations we all know. So that is what's being proposed. And there's, in this traffic studies, they didn't, I'm not saying it's a hundred tracks in that, trucks an hour. They're not saying that, but the truck traffic is there. And I'm, my concern is how are they, even if you put speculations on, the truck's gonna do what the truck wanna do. You can say all this wonderful stuff, no one tells the truck driver, he's gonna listen to his GPS or whatever it is. And we're gonna, in my opinion, I think the borough will be adversely impacted because there's no way of getting to the facility from the west and the east without doing some U-turn or some going down, in my opinion.
The path of least resistance is left on the Fender clover, lead down Fender, right on Union, right past the daycare, past the hospital, right past that.
And there's the right.
They go right up. Right past, right past DMV.
Right.
And up to Gaston, and that's not gonna happen. It's just not acceptable.
So I have some strong languages I've never used here. I think I start really strong. So if you take a look at the language, plus the applicant, the attorney was here for the developer, Jeff, they didn't know that. And he said that the zoning board, Bridgewater, when you hear the application, because it's a kind of mixed, there's a little sliver on the residential zone, so it's not the planning board.
Yeah, well, because they have residential, all the streets, the dinner streets have come from Golden Avenue, all residential. If they were serious about it, they would take one of those streets and, like, that driveway. In Bridgewater.
It's a permitted use. If you read, I don't know if you guys have a copy of this, but I, I was gonna ask, I basically, did I miss it?
I don't think I saw the copy. I don't see it yet.
Okay, cool, all right. Well.
Everybody gotta be. What is their timetable?
I don't know, I don't think it's been, been complete. The Bridgewater side has not been, Jeff mentioned it, and I think Tony had actually called up to it. I had said that, it's, my understanding from reading everything, it's a permitted use in the zone. So I, and they're asking for a bunch of variances. I said, on behalf of the planning board, some of them, that the variances not be granted because of the location. I also made a recommendation, the planning board saying, to Bridgewater Council and the Bridgewater Planning Board to relook at the zoning. And maybe this is not appropriate location for warehouses.
But you can't say that now.
Well, it can certainly get you this draft copy. It's, it's strong for me, but I'm basically saying from the planning or consult bill, saying this should not be approved because the C variances should not be granted, it's a permitted use. So you can't say you can deny it for a use variance. It's gonna be the parking variance or the height variance. Any of the height variances, there's four or five variances. But I'm saying to them too, that they should relook at this because in my opinion, they're inappropriate.
Like, is this a twenty-four-seven operation?
Yes.
Where exactly will be approved? Where Mac Truck is gonna be, right?
It's right next to Mac Truck.
Yeah, to the east.
If you have the four, two-story professional office buildings, it's called Center Point.
Yeah, right.
They're gonna demolish all the buildings and put two big rectangle warehouses like this. They're offset slightly. And you have a huge sea of parking around them to handle the truck traffic and for the employees. So you have truck parking, employee parking. And there's been a big stormwater management study done that, as Colin knows and others, that, that looks is gonna have to window because of what the executive emergency management apparently didn't promulgate rules this Friday. And that is very effective immediately. So that buys us more time because the stormwater management report they did this is out the window. So they're gonna have to resubmit, and if Jeff is correct, and their application goes in front of the zoning board.
They'll send the stormwater south into the Arbor Glen detention basin, which will then plug in.
Right.
So the detention basins are gonna have to get bigger, you gotta be certain, above things, I mean, it's, it's a monster.
Is this too soon to bring this up at a council meeting to keep the other people informed?
I don't think it's too soon. I think that we get this draft out, everyone, everybody can look at the language. I, I think the, the final product should be on some of the planning board letter, signed by the chairman, in my opinion. Uh, make sure Kevin gets it and he can distribute it. Yeah, this, this is ninety-nine percent accurate. I just, it just changed today from the planning board to the zoning board in Bridgewater. Uh, but I, I don't know how these trucks work. I mean, I just don't, I, I don't see it, I don't see it at all.
And they're assuming all the traffic is gonna be west to east. And, and there's, it's gotta be fifty-five.
They show that.
It's coming from Newark.
The highways along that, two eighty-seven is right there, you can't get there from here. You simply can't, just can't, it's just nowhere.
They'll make it right, make it right up the hill and fuck faster.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
I mean, they show rest of the truck volume because it's not professional offices. The square footage, the whole site actually goes down, three hundred and twenty-five thousand here. Gross floor area to two hundred and eighty thousand, however.
You didn't have the truck track.
The nature's not.
The pedestrian cars that are.
And also, when they do this traffic study, when they do this traffic study, those buildings have been mostly vacant for the last two years, with everybody working from home. So if they're counting cars anytime in the last two years, it's a fake number. It's grossly undercounted.
Right.
And not for trucks. So you get two things there. This, this is, I have a question with the regional partnership. And I guess the reason why they're giving us the courtesy review. Has this ever worked for us, worked out for us, that we said, oh, please don't do that?
I think it has.
I think it's, can you tell me once where it actually worked? No, I'm so serious, because all I see with Bridgewater is that they find a way to put inconvenient things on our border. They get the tax revenue, we get the traffic. And if you think, and we, and we can go all around and around on this, but this is a perfect example of what you beg and plead with them, that this is gonna mess us up. And they're gonna do what they're gonna do because they don't have to listen to us.
Well, I, I think that, I'll get this correspondence out, and it's really early. And I, I, the, the big issue I have with this is I don't think there's reasonable conditions that are enforceable. As the board said, you can't, you can't, no trucks can come from the east or from the turnpike. How do you enforce that? It's never gonna be enforced. And the problem is, you have all these speculations that are enforced, and yet when the cat's out of the bag, you're stuck with this problem.
And if those conditions, because the way the resolution should be crafted, or I'm assuming would be crafted, is that that relief is granted because the conditions are enforceable, mitigate the impact. If those conditions cannot be enforced, then mitigation is impacting, there's no justification for granting a variance. And that's the back door.
But are they looking at mitigating problems for themselves or for us? They're not looking at us. They know that you did, the traffic studies has nothing about Gaston Avenue or nothing about South Bridge Street or North Bridge Street or Golden Road. They're not talking about us, talking about their own impact on their town.
Larry, I think Mike's gotta be very specific about what our issues are and what roads will be impacted. And that needs to be what the border adjustment in Bridgewater has to consider. And their border adjustment is no different than ours. They have, have the same rules. It's all the same stuff. So I think, Mike, circulate that and.
We'll get it out, we'll just line say it, and we'll see where it goes. I mean, we'll get it out. I, I understand your concern, Larry. I would just say we could all, always participate in the public meeting.
Right.
I think it's leveled that thing. I don't know of a letter or letters, well, I don't think, I, you go back to you, Larry. I think this is a, this could be a diversity impact indicated. So I think we do a very good letter. Okay? And then I think that we're gonna have to participate at this in the public hearing, should we get to a public hearing.
I, I, I see us doing a public outreach to affected streets or potentially affected treats and have those folks come with myself and members of the planning board to.
What about rejecting what our options are to them upfront? No, if you do this, we're gonna have this, we're gonna have. What about rejecting what our options are to them upfront? You know, if you do this, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to. What we, what I'm, what I'm saying is that they need to understand that we'll be writing tickets. The truck that comes down there, because we can't control Route twenty-eight, because that's the highway, that part of it. If they move twenty-eight to Main Street, we can control it. They're not gonna do that, so.
I wanna move on.
Well, while I'm talking, let me just say, we should be telling them, we will start enforcing no trucks on Gaston Avenue, and if that's how they wanna welcome.
You gotta be very careful in what you say, because you can end up in court and it can come back and bite you.
This is what I'm asking. What can we tell them to do?
Let Mike write his line. Let me get this out on board to everyone, and then the next planning board meeting, we can work at this, and maybe want stronger language, more.
I'll give you a successful example of a road that was impacted negatively for years, that's River Road in Piscataway. They have a weight limit now.
Yes.
It is enforced, and believe, and I take it two, three times a week, so I know I'm on that road.
And we're.
And believe it or not, you don't see those trucks going down River Road as much. You'll see once a road will go down. We can do it. Adamsville Road supposedly has a weight limit. No, we, we can do it, and if we have a police force, and we go out, we give everybody a ticket. These guys are not that stupid. They'll figure it out real quick. They wanna go where they're gonna go, we're gonna pay the price. And our, our issue as governing officials is to make sure our police police those streets early in August.
Right. And that's, that's a potential solution, a better solution, is to have it not go.
Correct.
Well, having it not go, because I agree with you, but, you know.
So, Bridgewater.
Okay, so I will certainly, I guess I'll get to Kevin, give the council, and, uh, I guess we'll discuss this in the next public meeting. We'll just a little wait this thing, and then get.
Remember, if you look at a town where they put in the mall rather than downtown, and look how successful that was, and that was a long time ago. Couple of things, in the New Jersey planner thing, I, I would encourage all of you to read that. There's a lot of good information in there, good articles. Uh, one of which was, we need to review our open container rules.
Walkers?
Well, because we have a lot of sidewalk cafes, we have a lot of outdoor dining, and we need, we need to make sure that our rules and our brand utilities complies with what the state requires. Also, we have, and I asked Mike to look into this, and I'm gonna ask him also to look into the open container rules. Cottage food operator permits. We've got two applications from Summerville, and we don't address the cottage food industry. And I'm not even sure I know where it is.
I was gonna, I was, I thought I was gonna ask a dumb question, I'm like, what's cottage food?
No, I took a great look at it. It seems to be that you could utilize your home, as essentially a home bakery, and.
Sell pizzas.
From there or something, yeah.
You bake your cookies at home, you let everybody know, I can do this for you if you wanna party or whatever. Call me up, I'll do them. I'll deliver them.
I, I'll give a little synopsis of what the rules are, what current worthiness is, and maybe some, um, some reasonable conditions on the money that you want.
What I, what I understand is that it's exempt from boarding health requirements.
Yes.
But it's still subject to local rezoning.
Local approval, yes.
Well, remember we had this discussion years ago about, uh, Roast Cat Cookies and, and Avon and stuff like that, what constitutes a business? This is the same thing. If someone's baking and delivering it, it's invisible, it has no impact. But on the other hand, if you've got ten cars an hour coming in to get your cupcakes.
Right.
Then it becomes. So, Mike's gonna look into it and come back to us with some information. And, and the last thing that, um, I wanted to address is Blue Acres funding. We need to, you know, while, while we're looking at, um, zoning changes in the Garden Apartment Zone, I think we also need to look at how we can utilize some of that Blue Acres funding to get people on the south side of town out of the water.
Yeah. I did some research on that, as Jason and Sharon know. I, I do believe right now it's only for single families, family. We did vet this out a little bit, but if there's more money being replenished, I think that'd be appropriate to go to.
We're gonna get the.
One or two family houses in the flood area, why not use it?
I understand a couple of applicants were denied.
That's what Kevin has told me, yes.
And I don't know, I don't know why, and it was.
You coordinated with Kevin?
Yes, Kevin seems to know that one or two applications are made, and they were not successfully funded.
Some more to follow on that. All right, at this point, I will open the meeting up to the public.
Yes.
We'll close the public session. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So, move. Second.
All of us in favor?
Hi.
All right, close the public. Thank you.